I've been waiting for two years to do that. I'm going to call the February 13th meeting of the Orno Town Council to order. Roll call shows all council members are present. Councilor Wingard is joining us remotely. Agenda review, are there any changes in the, I have one change to the agenda. We have an executive session listed at the end of our meeting and we're going to have a second executive session pursuant to one MRSA 405 discussion related to a personnel matter. So we'll add that second to the agenda. Yes, and I take a motion to add that to the agenda, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. And since we have a remote member, we're going to have to do all of our votes by roll call. So Nancy, if you do a roll call vote on that, please.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Berthasell?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Great. Moving on, we have approval of minutes of December 19th, 2022, and January 9th, 2023. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Move approval, second.
Seconded. Any corrections or additions? The usual excellent job by Nancy Ward. Roll call vote on that, please Nancy.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Beth Berthasell?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
And Council Larway?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you Nancy. Public comments, this is the opportunity for public comments on items not on the agenda. If there is anybody else there in Neverland that wants to make a comment, or in the audience. Can't read that, can you? I guess we. If there is anybody who would like to make a comment, please do so now. Sarah, go right ahead.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Ken.
Thanks. So I have a comment and some questions about something on the consent agenda. Would this be the time to do that, or will you ask for comments again and questions right before the consent agenda?
We don't normally ask for comments before the consent agenda, so probably you should go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to request that the, first I guess I just want to say that I have some comments about the item which is the extension of the town manager contract by two years. And I want to be really clear that I have, this is no comment at all on Sophie and all the good work she does, this is just my procedural issues that I have with that. So I would like to say that I would like to have that moved off the consent agenda and have it be a new business item for vote either at this meeting or a future meeting. The reason being that I feel that consent agenda items should be things that are fairly low cost or no cost and also kind of low significance. And I think that council's two most important jobs are passing a budget, approving a budget, and you know, approving a town manager and supervising that position. So it's not something that I would like to see on a consent agenda. That was my first comment. My second is to say thank you to all of you sitting up there, Tom, most especially you. I'm aware that we didn't used to have any kind of evaluation process for our town manager position for many years and that council has put that in place in the last two, two and a half years. I'm very, very grateful for that. I'm hoping that that's something council is committed to continuing with Tom leaving. Tom, we are very much going to miss you. And then I think the only other thing I would like to say on that is that I would really love to encourage council to expand that evaluation process a bit. To the best of my knowledge, that process involves council and I think senior staff, which might be six to 10 people, I don't know. But I'd really encourage council to think about expanding that to be more of a 360 evaluation where all stakeholders are included. So that would be an invitation to all employees and all community members. I know council's been working really hard for the last three years on living into their values around inclusion and equity and diversity and belonging. And I think that those kind of invitations are very important if we're going to walk the walk that we're talking about. I'm concerned that marginalized groups stay marginalized further when they're not invited. So I'm hoping that you all will consider expanding that. I know that you have time for that, that the contract doesn't expire until July of 24, and that in the past you haven't even started your evaluation until March. So I'd really ask you to think about perhaps extending that date a bit so that you could make transparent to the public that the process is going on and at least invite people to reach out to their counselors or their supervisors or if their employees to participate in that process so that we can really be the town that we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sarah. The consent agenda items can be removed from the consent agenda by any council member. So when we get there, we'll see if anybody wants to remove any items.
Oh, I forgot to turn my microphone on, I'm rusty at this. Just, I mean, before we get into any of the procedural stuff, just real quick, it is just, and this isn't a comment on the process, but it is just traditional process that employment contract extensions are frequently on the consent agenda. It's not particular to the town manager or this specific contract, it's just a matter of operational business is how we normally have done it. And also the evaluation process for the town manager is much longer than the past two years, if I recall. So it's not just a recent development, it's something that's, that's been part of this process all along.
Tom, just a point of order that any counselor or a member of the public can take an item off consent. So by asking for the item to be removed, it will be removed.
Thank you. I actually didn't realize that, I don't think we've ever had a member of the public request that.
It's something you can learn after all these years of service, Tom.
Okay. I think that was the end of our public comments. Acknowledgements by council. Let's start on my right with Mr. Kenny.
I'd like to acknowledge the passing of someone that I think, when I think about the fabric of the Orno community, she spent probably the better part of 40 years working at Orno High School, and I feel confident saying that she's touched the lives of probably most every student and all faculty and staff that have passed through the walls over that time. The community and especially the Cobb family lost, I think, one of the best last week with the passing of Shane Cobb, and she'll greatly, be greatly missed. I want to acknowledge that. Are we going to talk about a, okay, thank you, a certain member of this council that may be leaving? We'll do that later.
Sonya?
Sure. Rather than acknowledge a certain member of this council who may be leaving, because I hear we may do that later. Shout out to all of the students who participated in this year's International Dance Festival on campus. It was a really fun show. I'll pass it to you Cheryl.
And once again, you stole my, my thing. I was going to acknowledge as well the International Dance Festival this weekend, or Saturday was wonderful. We had a town counselor who was our, who was the MC, one of the MCs, and she did a great job. And it was, the show, I went to the two o'clock show, it was well attended, and there were a lot of people that were so happy to see it back again and live. So, thank you.
I'd like to start by acknowledging the hard work of Megan Mazzella from Parks and Rec. For all of the work she's been doing launching the Community English Program, it's going to be a Town of Orno and University collab to provide non-native English speakers an opportunity to improve their communication skills. It is a free class and it meets on Mondays at the Orno Public Library and Wednesdays at the Topman Lounge at the Union on campus, both locations. It's 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM, but I love to see these things happening in our community and I love how much time and effort our staff put into these initiatives. So thank you Megan for that. Also excellent name, if I do say so myself. Love a Megan. Okay, so I'd also like to acknowledge a certain member of council we've been alluding to, Tom Perry. This is going to be, because Tom likes to get away from the winter, this will be the last full council meeting where we'll have his in-person presence. Tom is retiring after just, you know, a short 50-plus years of service to this community in general. He started as the assistant principal in 1971, progressed through being the principal, the superintendent of schools, and joined town council in 2006 where he has served all of these years and has served the last three years as council chair. I don't think, there's probably enough time or adequate wordage to really appreciate everything that Tom's given to this community, but I know personally as a counselor, I have benefited so much working with you, Tom. We are all going to miss you very much. However, as you know, we will not let you off the hook. We will be calling you and asking you to volunteer for things, but I wanted just to take this time to recognize and appreciate that 50-plus years of service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, hard to follow that up. I'll just say I've also really appreciated having you here in the last year that I've been on council. I think you've been a really fair voice with a lot of concern to make sure that everybody feels heard in every discussion, and I will miss you as well on this council. And then other acknowledgements also sound really good, so I'll just echo all of the rest of them.
I would just join in with the, oh Jeff, I'm sorry.
That's perfectly all right. Tom, my parting gift to you is to not give you my cold, so thank you very much for all the time you've given us. Before we break, I also want to recognize the Orno Land Trust volunteers and Penobscot Valley Ski Association for putting on a great Caribou Bog Ski Race and series of events lately. So that is not to take away from our acknowledgement of Mr. Perry, who's a phenomenal leader. Thanks.
Thank you. And following up on your comment, Jeff, I'd like to just acknowledge the event that's being held on February 26th at the Caribou Bog Outdoor Center in Orno on Taylor Road, sponsored by the Caribou Bog Outdoor Center, the Orno Land Trust, the Orno Economic Development Corporation. A nice, a great family event from 11:30 to 2:30 on Sunday, the 26th. And then I'd like to follow up on Leo's comment on Shane Cobb, who I had the pleasure to work with for over 30 years, and I can't think of anybody who contributed more to the school during that time than Shane did, so a person who'd be sadly missed. And finally, another longtime Orno resident passed away recently, Charles Grant, who lived on Bennet Road for many years with his family. Charlie was a longtime director of the Counseling Center at the University of Maine and a great public servant who served on the school committee for many years. Okay, unfinished business, any unfinished business? We do not have any. And we have a consent agenda and we are removing from the consent agenda Order 23-28. So other than Order 23-28, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, could I ask for 23-21 to be removed?
Of course you can.
23-24?
Wait a minute. So 21, 23, 24.
No, 21, 24, 26, and that's it.
Not 23?
Correct.
All right. So we're removing Order 21, 24, 26, and 28. We'll take those up under new business. So did I get a motion?
No, move approval.
So a motion to approve, please.
Move approval.
And a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor, we're going to do the roll call vote.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Berthasell?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
And Council Larway?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you. So we'll take up the items in order under new business, and we'll add these consent agenda items up top. So item Order 23-21, order authorizing the town manager to pay Greenwood Emergency Vehicles LLC of Brunswick, Maine, up to $27,708 for emergency hydraulic system repairs to the fire tower truck and funds drawn from the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund. Motion to approve, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sophie, Jeff, who's going to take this one?
Jeff Lowe, Public Safety Director for the Town of Orno, speaking on behalf of the Fire Department right now. So yeah, this is, this is the critical hydraulic system that basically runs all the functions of the main ladder of the truck itself. That's the up-down, side-to-side, all those types of things. Specifically, it relates to the large canisters that are on the side of the truck that allow the ladder to raise. Without those, it's basically just a big piece of metal that sits on, on top of the truck. Unfortunately, because of the type of equipment that it is, it has to be serviced by a certified vendor, and the, the, one of the cans itself had to be sent to Texas for repair. So that's, that's a bulk of the cost that we are looking at associated with this, with this particular expense.
Thank you, Chief. Questions?
Thank you, and I guess the question is probably less for you and more for council. I had, I had asked if we might be able to see when we're going to be spending money from reserve accounts. I was hoping to, I didn't miss anything, did I? Did you send it? Because I was hoping in an email?
Yep, I did.
What time was that?
It was this afternoon. But give me just one minute.
Yeah, and I guess from a council perspective, does that's, I had requested we, when we're going to spend reserve funds, if we could see the account reserves, just because I have no idea where we're at. And I don't have any question about this expense or about this, this need, obviously.
Just so you're aware, Council Kenny, I, normally I do that. I don't know why I missed it this last time, but the balance in, I'm just trying to.
$352,000 and change is what's in that reserve fund account according to your email?
That's great.
Staff forwarded that to you again, Leo.
All right. Any other questions on this item? Ready for vote? Any public comment? All those, oh, I keep saying all those in favor, but it's going to be roll call.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Berthasell?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you. And Order 23-24, order authorizing previously authorized expense of up to $20,000 related to the town's portion of the salt affected well insurance claim at 88 Kelly Road. Order 23-19, additional $15,000 to be spent for up to $35,000 with all funds drawn from the contingency account. Motion to approve, please.
So move.
And second?
Second.
And discussion?
Yeah, on this, I was, and I remember talking about this before, I guess I'm curious, couple, couple questions. It says the town's portion, is the only other portion being paid by our insurance or is there a third party paying additional?
Just our insurance.
Just our insurance and us. Can I ask what the total bill that we're anticipating for this, like how much is it, what does it all add up to?
Right now, it adds up to a little over $57,000.
So our insurance is only covering 22,000?
So our insurance is covering 25. I added the contingency of three, so we weren't back here waiting for another month because it seems like every month the cost increases.
And my last question on this is, does this absolutely solve the problem, or could we be back doing this again in a year or two or three or?
So this resolves this claim, they cannot make another claim based on this issue. If five years from now, this well is affected by salt and it's road salt, then we would have a different claim.
Another claim. Can you remind me what the cost would, would be to, to run a line there?
So when I talked with Boyd Smith at the Water District, back of the envelope, assuming no ledge, but we know that there's ledge there, he put that at over 150 and probably closer to $250,000. It has not been engineered, I didn't ask for an exact measurement because when, at the time, we were looking at $30,000 or $20,000, it just didn't make sense.
Yeah, I agree. The question comes in, if it's 50 grand every five years, then, then does it? And we won't, we don't have any, is this, this claim, this is the first of this claim at this location?
That I'm aware of. And they're putting the, the hydraulics, hydraulicist has suggested a particular location to place the well at, so it doesn't go in the exact same place.
Gotcha, all right. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Roll call vote, please.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Berthasell?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
Council Larway?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you Nancy. Order 23-26, order authorizing the town manager to apply to the MDEP Courtesy Boat Inspector Program with Greater Poochaw Lake Association in an amount not to exceed $5,000 to fund an intern to complete boat inspections at Gould Landing during the 2023 summer season with any required matching funds from the FY23 municipal budget or through donations from the Greater Poochaw Lake Association. Motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kenny again.
Can I ask what, what happens if the DEP doesn't fund us, that gives us zero? Is that an option, or do we know these are pretty secured funds, or?
If DEP provides us zero, then Poochaw Lake won't want an intern.
Well, it says remaining funded through operational budget or the Greater Poochaw Lake.
So that is, if, if matching funds are required, which there might be a couple hundred dollars that are required as a match, we'll either fund it through the operating budget or Poochaw Lake Association will give us a donation to cover the matching funds if we get the grant. If we don't get the grant, then we wouldn't run the program.
Okay, that, I didn't, I didn't gather that from how this was written, but is that, that's the case, then that's, I think, that, that answers the main question. I just didn't read that.
Any other questions on this item? Then let's have a roll call vote, please.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Berthasell?
In favor.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
And Council Larway?
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Thank you Nancy. Order 23-28, order amending Section 2 of the Employment Agreement between the Town of Orno and Sophia L. Wilson as follows. The term of this agreement shall commence July 1, 2019, and shall continue until, here is the change, June 30, 2026, unless terminated pursuant to the terms of this agreement or unless specific language is provided for by a subsequent amendment to this agreement. All other language in this section shall remain and apply to the new ending date. Motion to approve, please.
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion from council?
I would just say that I see one of council's primary roles as overseeing this process with the town manager. I mean, in the same way that she oversees the entire staff of the town, we oversee her employment contract. This is fairly routine to me and I would like to vote on, on the amendment, I mean, on the order as, as it stands.
Other council comments?
I do appreciate the public comment earlier that, given that this is sort of an important item of business, I, I'm glad that we're considering it separately rather than as a consent agenda item, and so I really appreciate that as a point of process and personally would like to consider in future manager evaluations, making that a process that includes more voices. I think that's all my comments at this time.
Any other comments from council? Comments in the public? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Council Perry?
In favor.
Council Gardner?
In favor.
Council Robertson?
In favor.
Council Wingard?
In favor.
Council Berthasell?
Abstain.
Council Kenny?
In favor.
And Council Larway?
Abstain.
And the vote is five in favor, there are none opposed, and two abstentions.
Motion is approved.
Yes.
So moving on to new business. Order 23-29, order authorizing the town manager to submit an application for the assistance of firefighters grant in an amount of $120,000 to replace soon to be regionally incompatible mobile and portable radios, accepting any funds awarded and further authorizing the town manager to expend said funds in accordance with the grant. And I take it that is Chief Lowe?
Move approval?
Thank you.
My microphone was off.
Second?
Thank you, yeah, we're looking for, we're looking for another grant opportunity. We have, we've long struggled with communication devices here in Orno. A couple years ago, we purchased some radios as a temporary stopgap to get us through for a while, not being sure what the regional dispatch center was going to do. They have set, they have since set a direction that they're going to go in for what we need for communications equipment, and we're going to need to try to catch up with that as they begin to develop the system. So what we're, what we're proposing here in this purchase is that we do one, one great sweep of all of our communication devices. We upgrade them so that they're compatible not only with the region for Penobscot, but also if we have to go outside of Penobscot County with a hazmat team or whatever, whatever the case may be. And we're looking for, like we usually do, we're looking for ways to do that without having Orno taxpayers, you know, eat all of that in, in one cost. The idea when doing this is, is we, instead of trickling them in, we do that one great sweep, like I told you. And then our expectation for these devices, they're going to be 12 to 15-year devices. And in that time, as they get ready to reach the end of their service life, we will start rotating them out through a, a technology replacement plan, if you will. So that's about, that's it in a nutshell for that particular item.
Thank you, Chief. Questions on this item?
Yeah, well, not really a question, but a comment. I remember when we had a presentation from our former police chief in, I think it was 2018, maybe, back, back then, long ago, and that was the first I'd heard about this issue with analog versus digital radios in the region. And it was really a little bit scary to hear about, you know, all of the issues with the radios that, not just Orno, but. with the radios that not just Orono, but a lot of the communities in this region had and the problems and, you know, the impact it can have on emergency services. Um, so we have been gradually approaching this process over a number of years. I know it looks like a big price tag, but we've also, you know, been looking for opportunities to not pass that all on to the taxpayer. So thank you for um, yet again, seeking out some some grants and uh, and stuff for us. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say I think this makes a lot of sense.
Yep, ditto. Um, thank you for pursuing this on our behalf.
You all set? Any public comments? Yes, the roll call vote on this motion, please.
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner.
In favor.
Council Robertson.
In favor.
Council Wingard.
In favor.
Council Berthel.
In favor.
Council Kenny and?
In favor.
And Council Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and there are none opposed.
Thank you. Order twenty-three dash thirty-one, order authorizing the town manager to purchase rack storage from U Line of Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin, to store hazmat supplies at a cost not to exceed six thousand, seven hundred dollars. We may very well have, we'll go back. Yeah. Um, I'll go back after this one. Um, with funds drawn from the hazmat reserve account, fortunately, both orders are going to be answered by Chief Lo. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.
So when you read this order, uh, probably one of the first things that comes to mind is, why are we looking for commercially produced rack storage when it would be reasonable, in a normal person's view, to just go out and build what we need for rack storage out of lumber and those types of things? And the problem that we run into when we do that is anything that's put into a municipal building, unlike your home garage or your private property, whatever, has to be engineered and certified to be able to carry weight. So for us to do this, um, for us to do this, the way that the Department of Labor would want us to do this means that we would have to go out and hire an engineer to come in and take measurements and do pre-build discussion about building racks. They would need to draw up plans for us, then we would probably want to hire a contractor, and this is just spitballing here, to come in and actually do the work, so we didn't carry the liability associated with putting those up and then the maintenance of the racks and and things as they go on. Um, I don't know what lumber is going for right now. I don't have any idea what an engineer would cost, but I'm going to guess it would probably be pretty close if you could find an engineer that would be willing to do a project of this size uh, to the cost. So why do we need rack storage? We're we're moving our equipment out of um, the buildings up at University of Maine where we had been storing it. It's time for us to vacate there. Um, it really wasn't getting um, maintained. It was starting to see a potential for damage. Um, moving it into the Public Works Facility, one allows us to have better eyes on it. Two, it needs to be on racks so that we can keep it off the floor. We can keep it protected. It needs to be readily available. A couple of our suits are close to three thousand dollars each, um, in addition to all the other suits and equipment that we we have to carry for hazardous materials response. So that's, that's why we're changing location for our equipment and why we're looking at going this way instead of trying to build our own, our own devices.
Thank you, Chief.
Questions?
I'm just curious, is there anything specifically that's pushing the need for us to be out of the university space? Or or what is it specifically about the space that is?
So the the university space is an an old residential area where students lived at one point. Uh, the building is is starting to fall apart, basically. Uh, there were rodents that are getting into our our storage area and uh, there's actually some, beginning to be some water intrusion in there as well through ceilings and whatnot. It's just not a, it's not a viable place to store potentially lifesaving equipment.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner.
In favor.
Council Robertson. In favor.
Council Wingard.
In favor.
Council Berthel.
In favor.
Council Kenny.
Favor?
In favor.
Thank you. And now back to the motion I skipped over, the order I skipped over, count, order twenty-three dash thirty, order authorizing the town manager to submit an application for the Gloria McKenzie Foundation Grant to replace existing Jaws of Life extraction equipment in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, no match required, accepting any funds awarded and further authorizing the town manager to expend said funds in accordance with the grant. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you.
So this uh, this is actually looking to replace the jaws of life that we currently have in service that are um, are thirty years old. It is on the capital uh, plan for us to replace them. I think it's coming up right off. I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly when. Um, the the devices that we use right now are are gas powered. Um, they are thirty years old. They're not made to deal with the uh, types of vehicles that we're encountering uh, nowadays with the, while the shell is very soft and very aluminum in nature, the the inner workings of those vehicles tend to be much more rigid than vehicles that we had seen in the past. And uh, really, the equipment's outdated. Very often, when we go and try to use our tools, we're required to call another fire department in to assist us. Last time we had to do it, we was for the uh, trailer truck rollover that occurred out on Forest Avenue. And we ended up bringing Bangor in because our our equipment was just underpowered, which is really what has driven us to try to find some type of alternative funding to get those uh, tools in quicker. What we're proposing we replace with is taking the um, the gas-powered exhaust-rich equipment out and bringing in battery-powered uh, devices, which believe it or not, are much more powerful. Uh, the batteries have a significant lifespan and um, they're just better tools all the way around as as far as um, weight and frankly, environment when you really, when you really boil it down. So um, that's what we're looking at doing if we're able to uh, to get this grant and uh, yeah, take any questions.
Questions or comments on this item? Again, we appreciate your work and looking at grants and alternate, alternative resources. Ready for vote?
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner.
In favor.
Council Robertson.
In favor.
Council Wingard.
In favor.
Council Berthel.
In favor.
Council Kenny.
In favor.
And Council Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and there are none opposed.
Thank you. See if I can stay in order now. Um, order twenty-three dash thirty-two, order authorizing the town manager to purchase a two thousand and twenty-three Ford F two fifty four by four crew cab pickup truck with snowplow prep package for vehicle for Public Works from Whitehead Ford Truck Center of Bangor at a total cost of fifty-four thousand and fifteen dollars with funds drawn from the approved capital equipment budget.
Move approval?
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Rob Yerxa couldn't join us this evening, so I'm going to try to pinch it. Um, as we discussed during the budget process this past um, spring, the town had been approved back in F Y twenty-one to replace a two thousand and six and a two thousand and nine um, pickup trucks that were um, on definitely past their useful life at that point. Um, we went to Whitehead Ford um, and put our order in. Um, Ford then suspended its municipal fleet production. We decided we would stay there and ride the wave because the um, the trucks were relatively inexpensive at thirty-seven and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, as council may recall, last spring, Rob came to you because the two thousand and six would no longer take a sticker and could not be used. At that point, council authorized that um, we would just go ahead and buy a truck off the lot, which became his service truck because it was the most appropriate one we could find. And then we moved his service truck down into the fleet. We uh, continued to hold that two thousand and nine as long as uh, work with that two thousand and nine and hold the um, order with Whitehead. We've been informed by Whitehead that Ford is not um, going to uh, restart their municipal fleet, at least as far as they are aware. They offered to put a truck in for us. We had budgeted fifty-five thousand dollars for that truck. This truck is at fifty-four thousand, fifteen dollars. Rob did look around um, to see if he could find something comparable. This particular truck is a crew cab and has some um, needs that the department, things that the department needed to make the truck work. Um, Rob uh, is pushing this at this point because this two thousand and nine is the truck that we um, fixed the frame on. And at this point, the body, you know, we thought it would get us a couple of years. We have more than, we've gotten more than what we thought and um, the body is at the point where we're going to have to take it off the road.
Thank you, Sophie. Questions or comments on this order? Anything from the public? Yes.
What what year is this, is this new used truck that we're buying?
It's a two thousand and twenty-three. It's in process of being built right now.
Okay. Um, my only comment, and I know that we talked about this before um, a couple of years ago, is that we s- that we really try to electrify our fleet. And I know that that's not, I know, I know that that's not um, possible um, with this particular truck. And and I know that that electric vehicles are, or hybrid vehicles are difficult to find. Um, I just want to put it on the record that we really do need to start thinking about electrifying, electrifying our fleet when we buy, um, when we buy new vehicles. So that's all. Thank you.
And I'll just second what Cheryl said.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ready for a vote? Nancy, please.
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner.
In favor.
Council Robertson.
In favor.
Counciler Wingard.
In favor.
Council Berthel.
Abstain.
Council Kenny.
In favor.
And Council Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is six in favor, none opposed and one abstention and it passes.
Thank you. Order twenty-three dash thirty-three, order authorizing the town manager to purchase a two thousand and twenty-three G M Sierra twenty-five hundred regular cab for the Water Pollution Control Facility from Var- Barney Buick GMC of Bangor at a cost not to exceed forty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars with funds drawn from the W P C F Capital Equipment Reserve Account. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chris Pro, Superintendent W P C F. So this truck we're replacing, a two thousand and thirteen. I was actually on the package with Rob, who was supposed to get two trucks from Whitehead. Mine is different than Rob's and it came in way over budget. So like Rob, I looked around, but I was able to find one um, that suited our needs on the lot at Barney's. Um, it came in about five thousand over budget and I was able to get them to to bring it down to a budget figure. The truck is just, it's just like the trucks we use after so many years, ten, twelve years. They just get old and weak. We carry a lot of weight with them, with trailers. We carry a lot of weight in the body. Um, an added benefit to this one is the one we have is a crew cab. So when you get a crew cab, you you shorten the body. Then you put a toolbox in it and you shorten it even more. So at times, you end up with a pickup that's not really a pickup. For us, anyway, um, a lot of the stuff that we carry, we prefer to have an eight-foot box. So this is just a regular cab with with an eight-foot body, like your traditional pickup.
Appreciate your shopping, Chris. Questions for Mr. Pro?
Yes, um, so I, does this, I think, based on what Sophie sent, I did just check my email, thank you. Um, does this put us down like fifty-six thousand in the capital left? And and I think we, this came up before that we were not comfortable sort of where we were at there. Is that correct or are we comfortable at fifty-six thousand?
I think we want to build all of those back up.
Yeah, I think all of our reserves for W P C F are are not where we're super comfortable, but I am comfortable ensuring that I have the equipment to be able to maintain the lines, which this truck is critical for. So I think in general, we are, we need to rebuild sewer reserves. But I also need to have um, the equipment appropriately run the department. My fear, Leo, is, you know, when we went through the budget process, this is where we elected to take the vehicle from. The other option would have been to raise the rates and take it out of the operating budget, which I now can't do.
So as far as running W P C F, I would have to assume there are more concern, like there's, we're good with everything else that keeps that place doing what it does versus a pickup truck, I guess, is my round, most direct way I can ask that question. Because I'm sure, I, I mean, I don't know what's cropped up over the years for like, oh, we had to spend hundred thousand this year because of something we didn't see.
So the only thing that is out there um, that we continue to baby along um, because it is well past its useful life, is the press. And that's about a million-dollar piece of equipment. So the reserve isn't going to, yep.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
And Chris, I just wanted to say too, I'm I'm really about trying to electrify our our fleet and get some rebates from um, Efficiency Main. Says, did you get a chance to look at any trucks that were?
Well, the issue with
Starting to
The issue with work trucks is when you start hauling weight, you chew up battery life really quick. So you could have a pickup that has a range of X miles. If you put a, you know, four-ton trailer on that, your X miles becomes much less.
True, but they are starting to make pickups that will do that now. So that's, that's, that's part of the, it's part of the switch over to, you know, to uh, to to electric vehicles and there's a lot of um, there's rebates out there. There's for for trucks and things like that through Efficiency Main currently. So just, I'm just wanting to say that that's where I'd like to see Orono head in that direction.
And I guess I'd like to comment that I'd like to see you get the the appropriate trucks and I'm not sure, I don't believe electric as they are right now, so appreciate your efforts.
I want to make sure that Councilor Robertson knows that staff has most definitely heard her concern. And when we're looking at administrative vehicles and police vehicles, we're looking at hybrid. Um, so I think the concern with both of the trucks that came before you tonight is those are both trucks that are on the line to haul trailers and in the um, in W P C F's case, they're hauling an incredibly heavy flusher routinely.
Any other questions for Chris, comments? Anything for the public? Then let's do a roll call vote, Nancy.
Council Perry.
In favor.
Council Gardner.
In favor.
Council Robertson.
In favor.
Council Wingard.
In favor.
Council Berthel.
In favor.
Council Kenny.
In favor.
And Council Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and there are none opposed.
Thank you. Moving on to order twenty-three dash thirty-four, order appointing Town Council Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Committee members for the following initial terms. A three-year term, Carlos Lopez Garcia and Michael Williams. Two-year term, Leah Hackler, Malcolm Himshut and Emily Roth. And one-year term, Brian Pittman and Douglas Johnson. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Comments or questions?
I'd say just, I appreciate the work of everybody um, who's been on council longer than I have as well as everybody who's been serving with me, talking about this. Appreciated the facilitation of the workshop where we discussed these applicants facilitated by Megan. I thought it was well done and I appreciate the work of uh, our town manager um, helping make this possible. So thanks, everybody.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that and further acknowledge and thank the folks who applied, um, those who are going to be serving on the committee and those who are not. Um, and hopefully we'll hear from everybody at these meetings. Um, and I I just really have so much appreciation and respect for people who volunteer their time um, to serve on on municipal committees and be part of the process. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Anything from the public? And roll call vote, please, Nancy?
Counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counsel Gardner.
In favor.
Counsel Robertson.
Yes, in favor.
Counsel Wingard.
In favor.
Counsel Berthel.
In favor.
Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
And Counsel Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they were none opposed.
And finally, order twenty-three dash thirty-five. Order appointing Sonya Berthel as the council liaison to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And I would just say that Sonya and I met the other day to talk a little bit about the role of the liaison person. And I'm happy that she is willing to serve in that capacity. Any comments or questions on this item?
I would say, having known Sonya for quite a while, I think she's a, she's an excellent choice for a liaison on this committee, and I think will serve very well.
Any comments from the public on this item? Then roll call vote, please.
Counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counsel Gardner.
In favor.
Counsel Robertson.
In favor.
Counsel Wingard.
In favor.
Counsel Berthel.
In favor.
Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
And Counsel Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Future agenda items or items of concern for counselors?
Yes, I I have one. I have been hearing uh, stirs about a unionization effort on town staff. And I'm concerned that we haven't been alerted to it sooner, as well as a potential personnel issue involved with it. It might be appropriate to call for an executive session discussing that. I'm not sure what the process is, but I thought I'd raise that.
So I can only alert you to things that I'm aware of, and I'm not aware of a union effort. We do have an executive session regarding a personnel matter, which may or may not get to what you're talking about.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Public petitions, we have none. Public comments? Do you have any public comments? Okay, then we are going to move into an executive session. And as again, as we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we have two executive sessions. The first executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five, section six C, with discussions related to the acquisition of real property or economic development. Motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved. Second. Tom, before you call for the vote and we enter executive session, just for the public, I think the intent here is to stop the Zoom feed. At this point, there is no act, no action coming out of either of these executive sessions. And that will allow us to have Counsel Wingard, the town planner for this executive session, and the town attorney for the next executive session. Join us by Zoom.
Thank you.
Thanks to our sitting um, members of the community that came out tonight.
Roll call vote on going into executive session.
Counsel Perry.
In favor.
Counsel Gardner.
In favor.
Counsel Robertson.
In favor.
Counsel Wingard.
In favor.
Counsel Berth- Counsel Berthel.
In favor.
Counsel Kenny.
In favor.
And Counsel Larway.
In favor.
And the vote is seven in favor and they're none opposed.
Take a few-minute break while people reorganize.